All righty. I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, March 1st. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we please could have a few moments of silence. Silence for Roberto Carillo, Valentina Gamboa, and Sarah Fuentes. And I'd like us all to pray for the poor people in Ukraine that are going through hideous and monstrous times. Hopefully, there will be peace soon. Please be seated. And if we may have the roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Ponse.
Here.
Mayor Protim Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, we have our city attorney, Scott Campbell.
And Yessenya, this mask was for you. Can you see the little Mardi Gras mask? This is yours.
I see it. I mean, kind of. Looks cute.
I'll put it in your box.
Thank you, Annie.
Announcements or written communications?
I have an announcement regarding the city's general municipal election, which will be consolidated with LA County. And it is their statewide direct primary election, which will be held on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. City staff today created a page on our website, so you can get all kinds of election information on it. And it will have our qualified candidates after March 18th, after they've been qualified by LA County. It has our two measures and all the resolutions that the city council adopted, and a list of important dates that you'll need to know. The city, as a reminder, the city will have two measures on this ballot. The first one is a quarter percent transaction and use tax. And the second one is a one-point increase to our TOT, which goes into our general fund.
Great, thank you. And did you have anything, City Manager David? Written or...
No written communications, Mary. We'll have something in City Manager report on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, presentations. Lysa, did you want to make the introductions?
Sure.
Or Yessenya, I think is the one.
I think it's Yessenya.
Or Cindy. Or Yessenya? Did you want to make the introduction?
Yes, of course. We do have Catalina Women's Forum, Andrea Olson, Denise Mader, and Tessa Hernandez, as well as Su Casa's Program Director, Lily Lopez. And they're here to present a video for domestic violence services that will be available for our community.
Great, thank you.
This song. Thank you. I want to say thank you to the council members for having me here. My name is Lily Lopez, and I am the Program Director for Su Casa, where domestic violence agency, where we provide services to domestic violence survivors. And that includes coming into the community of Avalon and providing those services here as well. One of the things that we do is provide services for those people that need shelter, need a little rest. One of the things in coming here that I thought about was, yes, it's harder to leave the island at certain timing, but we can provide those extra support when they're ready to leave. And that's why we're here to collaborate with the Women's Forum in servicing the community of Avalon. Some of the programs that we have, it's not only shelters, we have a transitional shelter, plus we have an outreach program that provides services to domestic violence victims. And those services can be anything from housing to, hey, I want to relocate, providing those services as well. So I'm hoping to provide as much as the community of Avalon allows me to provide, but also I know that it's been a little hard to get somebody here and be consistent. So I'm hoping by the summer to come back and tell you guys, hey, this is our progress. So in here, what I'm trying to do is not only do communication through phone for your community, but also come onsite once a month, so the community is aware that we're here to provide that extra support and support all of you guys here with the assistance of the Women's Forum.
So we at the Women's Forum, we are looking for domestic violence advocates that we are going to help train so that we can help be like the people on the ground in Catalina to provide services to get somebody to a shelter, do accompaniments. So if, a lot of times with domestic violence, there's restraining orders that need to be prepared, and we can accompany someone to the courts over town to assist them with restraining order or help them to find emergency accommodations here on the island, as well as help them, transport them on the ferry as well. One of the things that we are working on at the end of the month, on March 24th, we're going to have a community building night at Avalon School. And Lily's going to come and present and do a demonstration and presentation of domestic violence prevention, kind of just give informative presentation of what domestic violence is and how to prevent it and how to support one another in the community. We are hoping that we are going to have that on a monthly, at least quarterly basis at the school. And we'll have different mental health kind of topics, suicide prevention, LGBTQ, and domestic violence. So we are looking for anybody who would like to, can we change? Anybody who would like to become an advocate with the Women's Forum. If you could contact us at info@theciwf.org, then that will go to me, and I will contact you and we'll get you connected to the training and get you on board with us. We also would like to promote that we are going to have our wine festival. The Women's Forum is going to have our wine festival this year, and that is our major fundraiser of the year. It's going to be September 17th. It's going to be a little different than past years. We're going to have it at the end, and have wineries there. And it'll be a little bit smaller, but we're hoping to have a great participation. So please look out for those things. We'll start promoting those on our social media pages and elsewhere.
So let me ask you, we're supposed to be changing the slides here?
No, we did it.
Oh, okay.
We only had two.
Oh, okay.
So we encourage the community of Avalon, if you are looking for support for domestic violence that you call the Su Casa hotline, we are in the process of marketing that throughout the town, so it should be posted throughout the town shortly. And we're working with Lily and the hotline staff to get them trained on Catalina's uniqueness and provide them support.
Great. Tessa, did you want to add anything?
No.
Come on, I should see you.
Thank you.
So is there ever any interchange with like law enforcement?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know your new captain. I would like to know the new captain and probably set a meeting with the new captain. Hi, sir. That way, we can have that support from them. And not only that, I mean, if there's anything that we can do as far as train the sheriffs and how to deal with domestic violence, that's something that I go to sheriff departments and do as well. Maybe that can be another collaboration. My thing here is to get the community not only involved, is to be aware, you know? Because Avalon is unique. It's like, in the mainland, people would want to leave right away for domestic violence. I need to leave, right? But here, you can. So the uniqueness of that is what brings me here. Because I want to, it's not only educate, but provide that awareness to everyone so that everybody's aware and how to help each other. You guys are very unique, you know? Everybody knows everybody. As soon as I walk down and I'm with Tessa, hi, you know? And that's amazing. But that's what brings you guys all together in this small community of Avalon. So make that work. And that's why I want to collaborate, not only with the sheriff, but maybe the fire department, you know, harbor patrol, which would be a main thing for us. The churches that you guys have here, collaborate with them to, you know, just put out the word. I know, you know, past reasons, there's been other people that come in here, and it doesn't work. But I want to make it work. You know, I want to come back in June or July and say, hey, this is our progress. You know, and continue going forward with this progress. Because Avalon is unique, and I like it. I like coming here. You know, so I want to provide that extra support to the community here.
That's great. And Lily, I just wanted to add that I was a member of the Women's Forum for about 10 years and also past president. We had always, the Women's Forum has always had a very strong connection with our sheriff's department. The department has the hotline numbers inside, they use them. I am aware of the use of a hotline in the past couple months. They, the department here does help to relocate persons, and so there's always been a strong connection. I think one of the disconnects that we've all had for a barrage of different reasons, but one being COVID, that there was a little bit of a disconnect. So your visit with us and the revitalization from the Women's Forum with this program could not have come at a better time. So thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Any questions or comments for the other council members?
None, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do, of course. Well, first, I just, I wanted to thank the Women's Forum for doing this for us. But I especially wanted to thank Andrea and Tessa. I know for Andrea, it's been a long road of hard work to try to bring more resources to this community. So I just, I can't thank you enough, Andrea. Honestly, I just see, even when I speak with you, I feel the passion. And Tessa, I wanted to thank you for the way you've committed to your studies and help wherever you can, but most importantly, that you bring back all that knowledge, you know, to our residents. So thank you for that. And Lily, I also want to thank you, you know, for taking this journey with us and I'm very excited for what you're willing to bring and help us with. You all have been so motivating and empowering. And I know you already mentioned law enforcement, but is there anything else that we can help as a city to support your efforts?
I mean, I think the law enforcement is number one, because that would help a lot. But I also want to know, as far as support, I think going out in the community. So just so you know, my first trip here, not only with the school, but the next time I come around, I want to go out to the community. Just coming here, I stopped at a store because I saw something I liked, right? And the lady asked me, what are you doing here, right? Look, I'm all dressed up. And she, and I told her, I said, I have a meeting with the council. And I told her what I did, and she goes, oh my God, we need you here. So that gave me an idea to go out in the community with the people that sell stuff, you know, the store owners or whatever, and just have a little conversation and say, hey, we're here to support. You know, what do you need from us, kind of thing? So I think I'm going to give it back to you guys and let me know what exactly is that the community of Avalon needs. I already spoke to the principal. I know what the kids need, but I'm not sure what the adults need. You know, I can read stats, I can get all the information I need and make an idea, but really, you guys are the city council, tell me what you need.
We will.
Yes. And thank you for having us.
No, thank you.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, got two items tonight. Green Pier Emergency Work. It has been determined that a contractor will be needed to repair four failed fender piles and one structural pile on the green pier. To facilitate the work being completed before high visitor season, emergency work will be necessary. These fender piles support the floats that surround the pier and provide access to recreational vendors out there. The plan is to solicit an RFP to available regional contractors, which we've already contacted, and then present the results to City Council for contract award and funding allocation in a very near date. So this is prepping for what we're going to be doing here, so that you're aware of it, okay? And we'll send you more information as it becomes available. An emergency coastal development permit through the Coastal Commission will be necessary. And then that will lead into a permanent coastal development permit for a long-term maintenance program. Second one, Tremont Street Parking. The parking along Tremont Street in front of the Tremont Street Apartments will be changed to a no-parking fire lane on February 7th. Staff has reported this upcoming change in its public work weekly updates. Additionally, staff has made contact with Tremont Street Apartments Management, and they're in full support of it. And they will be notifying the residents of the change. We are also putting flyers in all the vehicles within the area. And so the reason for this change is for safety. Historically, the curb was painted red as a fire lane. And then incrementally, it was changed to green to see how that would work. And the fire chief can expand on it more when he gets up here. But according to the fire chief, there's not sufficient clearance with the way that the parking is happening right now. And then also these vehicles, and especially if they're a vehicle with the curtains on, the carts, or if they're an enclosed vehicle that's an autoette, it blocks the view of pedestrians that are actually going to the assigned parking across the street. There's two things happening there. It's interesting to note that, you know, there is sufficient assigned parking for all of those residents across the street. So whatever's parking there is additional vehicles that are not a legal permit. And so there seems to, what's happening is they're parking non-legal vehicles or additional vehicles in those spaces, and then they're parking a legal permitted vehicle within the green parking. So, and so the, is there any questions for me?
I have a great, and Yessenya can answer maybe better. Is there guest parking up there at Tremont?
I believe the street is what's used as the guest parking.
Okay. I just wondered.
Yes.
Okay. And I had something, if there's anything else on this, on this issue. In the public works update that we get from Jamie, which is excellent, there was a discussion about the tree being, that nasty olive tree being taken down.
Yes.
And there was a discussion about what to put there. I'm kind of in favor of putting a shade there because it covered, it was covered on four sides, and people sit on all four sides of that. It might be easier to maintain. And I know in talking to David, we might have some issues with the shade covering that we were planning on putting down front street. So that might be a simple fix, and it would be, it would also be beneficial, I believe.
So in the very near future, we're going to present the concepts to City Council. So Dave can speak about that. We were just talking about, he's got some mockups for that, and some of them, wow. I was impressed with some of the things that we could do. And so we're thinking about three planners right now to start to roll that out. And the cost's coming in, and he can expand on it. And there may be funding enough to get even a rectangular one to maybe replace on the ploppa that we have high maintenance on, so.
Oh, I didn't know if you'd be coming back.
But we need, yeah, we need to have a community discussion on what everybody wants, but we're ready to implement it when we do get that information.
Excellent, oh, thank you. Warren, you want to come up?
Thank you. Good evening. Warren Karstafen, Harbor Master. First of all, I want to thank Bob for that introduction regarding the emergency pier, the piling work. That is an important item that I've been discussing for some time. The fender piles around the pier have been degraded over time. And it's been some time since we've had proper maintenance. And obviously, this, it's kind of a complicated issue because of the piles themselves and everything that goes into with the permitting. But this is Bob's expertise, and I want to say that the fender piles, as you know, we put the floats against them. They support our economic generator on that pier. So all the dive boats that come in and use those, the charter boats, the shoreboats, the dinghy docks, all of that is supported by those fender piles. The Avalon Boat Stand runs off two fender piles. So it's an important item. We'll keep you, you know, in the loop as we progress. But this is an important item. And then even more importantly is to set up the five-year plan so that we have a maintenance goal that spreads the work over time. And then each five-year stint that we come up, we can readdress what our needs are, what our maintenance goals are, and then go after that. So anyways, thank you for that, Bob. And then back to float two. We did that maintenance on float two. We got it back. Float two is going to be installed at the Carrilla Mall tomorrow. Let's see, we'll do that after the 11:50 express boat leaves. Avalon mooring service and Avalon maintenance crews will work together, raising the chains to secure the float on its anchors. Float three has been taken to the shipyard, where it's going to be worked on throughout the month of March. So somewhere around the end of March, we should have that back, and then we'll have all the floats back in place. Catalina Express and the Catalina Flyer have been working well, sharing float four. We really appreciate all the support from them. On February 16th, patrol officers joined in with Baywatch Avalon and attended the United States Coast Guard helicopter hoisting operations just off of Avalon here. The training took place, right off Avalon there, and lasted just over an hour. It was the hoisting operations that they do. On Saturday, February 26th, we had beautiful weather for the 40th underwater cleanup of Avalon Harbor. And they had, from what I was told, over 500 participant divers and many volunteers. Kept the activity in the harbor very busy over the weekend. I didn't get a chance to take a look at all the debris that was found, but all I can say is thanks to the Chair, Jill Bovin, for setting that up, and then all the volunteers, as well as Avalon Harbor Patrol, Avalon Fire, Baywatch, and everybody that was out there supporting that event. Since my last report regarding the boating traffic, we have moored 331 boats for a total of 1,393 nights. Patrol responded to three medical calls. Patrol warned and advised six individuals of municipal code violations, did approximately 30 public assists, and did 109 security patrols of the facilities. And that's all I have. Any questions?
No, great, thank you. Oh, I appreciate the guys in the harbor, the blasting the water cannons for Bill Bushing.
Dr. Bill Bushing, that was really nice, yeah. So that came together really well.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, City Staff, Michael Allegra, Fire Chief. Continue from Bob, any questions on Tremont? All good? I grew up on that street. It was red, and it was a temporary two hours. So we got a lot of calls up there. Next, we're going to be working on up the Tremont Hall area, because when there's events, we cannot get. It was hard during COVID because tables were outside. But hopefully, once we now allow stuff to go in, we're going to have to work up there as well so we have access to Tremont Hall. As far as calls, 52 EMS calls and 24 fire calls the last month. And then some good news, the sheriffs today received some training on their new ticket machine.
All right.
So they have a meeting tomorrow, and they're all going to learn how to use it. So tickets are going to go way up, they told me.
Beware.
CPR classes. I have, we have one scheduled for each month for now. March 30th will be our first one. April 13th will be our second one. And May 12th will be our third one. And we'll put that on the city website tomorrow. And then just a fire prevention tip, closereadore.org. There's the slogan, close before you doze. So closereadore.org, this will also be on the website tomorrow. The videos are really great, and it shows you, when you close your door before you go to sleep, if there's a fire in the room next to you, shows you what happens when your door is closed and when your door is open. The chance of survival is huge. So close, close before you doze, and we'll have that added tomorrow.
Wow, that's fascinating.
That's it.
Okay, any questions?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, good evening. So as Mike had mentioned, we're getting with the times and technology. And we were issued an automated site machine similar to what Code uses and other county departments or city departments are using. So I also wanted to share that tomorrow, we have our body worn camera training. We have four members from the department who are going to host training for us all day tomorrow. And after our training, we'll all be deployed with our cameras. And so that's been a long time coming. I'm very happy that we're moving in that direction as well. What I wanted to share also with respect to Su Casa and the presentation earlier. Over town, I was not only personally involved in fundraising for Su Casa, but I did a lot of work with the shelters they had over town. And one of my very first meetings was with the Women's Forum. And they provided, and we still have just a couple left, like victim advocate bags that had resources and information. And anytime we encounter a domestic violence victim within the city, we provided the resources. We make a recommendation, so that an outreach does take place with a domestic violence person. Lily and I have a meeting scheduled, so we'll be talking more in depth to how we can best collaborate together.
That's great.
Lastly, for the race and marathon and 5 and 10 Ks on March 12th, we have the reserve deputies that will be out here as well. And we're looking forward to a good race and participation. My understanding is the numbers are pretty high. So it's good that people will be coming here, and we'll do everything we can to safeguard everybody.
Great. Any questions? Captain Bedali? Captain Bedali? No? Okay, Yessen, you're good? Okay, okay, thank you, Joe. Matt, he's just cleaning it for you.
Oh, yeah, oh, Matt.
Thank you, Dave. Council, I have nothing to report, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, take it away, Dave.
Mayor, Council. Community Service Department is proud to announce the new Spring and Summer Activity Guide is finally out. Each of the council member has received one hot off the press. It is in digital form as, as well on the recreationofcityofavalon.com website. In here you'll see what is coming up for our youth, adult, and senior programs, our community calendar, events in a facility, and our facility heat maps in the back. If you like the guide, please let Marissa Marones, our Recreation Coordinator, know, she did a lot of hard work on it. One of the new programs that you can sign up for now, which will start on April 6th, is karate classes. The instructor is Jessica Hickman, a third degree black belt in Rai Wuruk Karate. It is traditional karate class, teaching discipline, self-control, fitness, and mental strength through the tradition of martial arts. The class will be held two times a week and will be only $60 for a two-month session. That's basically 16 classes. She will be living here full-time on the island starting in April as well. Age groups will be from five to nine, 10 to 13, and 14 through adults. You can sign up at City Hall or on the recreation.cityofavalon.com website. Spring Fest is the next event coming up on April 14th. Signups have opened up today to get a booth. We are working with the Love Catalina and some local restaurants to figure out options to allowing the food vending to continue and reach LA Public Health Code, code. We will update you more as we move forward. We are looking for volunteers for our Senior Lunches program, somebody to host it at Singing Waters from 11:30 to 1:00, lunches included in that. You're to hold, basically make sure everyone gets their food, be able to hold conversations, maybe start a game, but just a way to get our seniors together, just get our seniors together for, for lunch and, and conversation. So if you're looking to volunteer on that, excuse me?
I'm sorry, is that five days a week?
That, we, we did that five days a week before COVID and then when COVID shut down, we delivered to, we delivered to everyone using the Mills on Wheels program. But now that, as things have opened up, we're looking at moving back to having that communal vibe again with our seniors. But we still do have our Mills on Wheels for those who are homebound.
Five days a week?
Five days a week is what we would like to do, but to do that, we will need a volunteer host for that five days a week. As the COVID rule seems to be loosening up, the Recreation Department is gearing up for youth sports again. We are hiring rec leaders and rec aides right now. So if you're looking to work in a fast-paced environment, have a love for sports and wants to give back to the community and get paid for it, this is the job for you. Please come by City Hall and pick up an application. Finally, we will be choosing a firework company today to shoot our fireworks. Very exciting, but we have not officially chosen the theme for the Fourth of July yet. There have been two that have been flowing out, floating out there today, so I'll put those two out for you guys to talk about. If somebody has more they want to talk about, they can do that as well. But I'm looking for guidance from the Council for the theme so we can get it out there. The first one is Catalina by Sea, Air, or Land, which was the theme two years ago, but COVID happened and we never got a chance to use it. And the second is Green Island in a Blue Ocean, which is, which is timely as it brings awareness of recycling to our residents as well as our visitors. So those are the two that have been floating out there. If there's another one, I just appreciate a little guidance on that. Thank you, any questions?
So do you want to bring it back to us to kind of, I've been talking about, because I, the air, land, and sea thing that I wanted to do a couple of years ago was also going to honor three people as grand marshals that were involved in air, land, and sea, and I don't want to say their names on right here. But now they're talking about the Green Island, Blue Ocean because of this 1383 that we've got to do and maybe make it more of a recyclable whatever. But I thought we could still do the air, land, and sea, Green Island, Blue Ocean, and whatever, and the sky is blue as well and it's all environmental issues, so, so that we could still maybe honor those three people, maybe have more of a recycling theme, like maybe they, maybe we have kids dress up in trash, you know, and golf carts dressed up with trash. And I mean, there's some clever things that could be done if we wanted. So anyway, that was kind of the way that I was wanting to go so we could, because we, then we'd have to come around and look for a grand marshal. And I was hoping that we could kind of incorporate the three somehow. So if you don't need the decision today, maybe y'all can.
Um, no, just looking for any, any sort of guidance and when we might bring that back or.
Okay.
Appreciate, all right, appreciate it. Thank you, any more questions?
Nope.
No, thank you.
Oh, I do have a quick question. Are we going to do, David, when are we going to do that recognition to put people on the wall?
Oh, that, that will be done in April during National Volunteer Week.
Oh, okay.
Are you looking for recommendations or do you have a list still going?
We never got, we had it, we had three that was going on the wall right before COVID and we couldn't have those meetings. So those, we will put those three up, but being the fact that we've had a couple of years, I'd be willing to put more up.
Okay.
For this year.
Thank you. City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just wanted to initially thank the department heads and their staff, how hard they're, they're working and how, how hard they're getting everything done and information to counsel and each other. It's, it's extremely exciting to see with all the projects that are truly going on, I just want to address a couple of them. First of all, 206 East Whitley. We have, I've been to the site, I've had a tour, we've had a couple of meetings. Bob Greenlaw and Devin have worked hard to have a pretty solid draft of an RFP that's ready to move forward, we hope by the end of this week. We have a pretty aggressive timeline that I've asked of Bob, that is, to get that contractor selected by the, hopefully the, within April and to get somebody ready to go. We do already have the contract in place for the sewage or sewer line and we don't have to do anything with that, that's ready to go, so that'll be taken care of prior to the contract for that, for the building itself, so. You know, I've, I'm learning here that deadlines aren't really deadlines, things move, supplies are hard to get and you, you hope, but we're, we're going to stay aggressive on this and hopefully we can get it, get it done. Just briefly, I wanted to bring Council up to speed a little bit on the Fuel Deck Cafe project. We are, find ourselves in somewhat of a engineer's debate over what needs to be done out there, but I think we have gotten all our engineers to at least exchange their thoughts and ideas. We're hoping to get them in a room soon so we can get a solid game plan going forward and we'll bring you up to date of where we're at there. But I'm encouraged and hopeful that we can, we can move forward with that project also. And then finally, we have had conversations with a number of different vendors regarding upgrading the city website. And we have a couple other scheduled this week, so hopefully we can be in a position to have a direction, which way we're going to go there. But I can assure Council, whatever direction we go, it's going to have the availability for online payment for all our city online accounts and we're working towards that. That is certainly a priority with whatever we do with the website. And we haven't committed to it, but we reserved avalon.gov today. So that is ours, we had to do avalon-ca because there are other Avalons and there are other City of Avalons that have reserved that. But we, we've done it, we've reserved it in case we go that direction and we have that option. And that's it, if there are any questions.
On the Fuel Dock though, we're still able to use the patio? That's, that's still ours? Bob Greenlaw is going, yes, okay, all right. So if we wanted to do an event or do something out there or rent it out, we could, we could do that, correct? Okay. City Attorney?
Yes, I just got, got, received several questions about the continuing ability to attend meetings remotely given that some restrictions are being lifted. Your ability to continue to meet like this continues as long as there are orders regarding masking unvaccinated people or social distancing, you have the ability to continue to meet remotely. So we will continue to find, make those findings at council meetings for the foreseeable future.
So, when I talked to Stephanie today, so if we have, if we have been vaccinated, we could take this off?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And that's it for you, City Attorney?
That's it for now, we've got a big item first on the agenda.
Okay, and Denise, do you have anything to report?
I do not.
Okay. All right, Councilmember reports.
I'll go first, just quick. Avalon being an inclusive community, we will be having our annual, second annual Catalina Pride Event on June 18th. When I have more details, I will let you know.
Are you sure that's only the second one?
It's the only, it's the second official one, the first one was last year.
Oh, okay, all right.
June 18th? It'd be nice to schedule a day of activities.
That's, that's what the, that's what the plan is.
Oh, great, great.
And the, there's a group of people here in Avalon who are spearheading it. Along with the Chamber.
Okay, I'll go since nobody's talking.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know if you had more.
Tony Zeiler's home, welcome home, Tony. On behalf of the, I represented the city at the underwater cleanup, found out that the youngest diver is a 10-year-old young man and the furthest came away from Florida, there was a group from Florida, and there were over 700 people. Roger Meadow is retired from Catalina Flying Boats. We took cake and refreshments to him yesterday and he was very pleased that people, few people came to, to do that. He'd worked for 20 years, worked for five years, and then he took a break, I don't know where he worked, and then he came back and worked for 15. So we don't know who that is. And today I picked up a young man and his, his mother and niece for Make-A-Wish Foundation. Orin's been kind enough and Scott to provide a boat ride for him to the East End and whatever and it's nice because the accessibility of his boats and getting in and out is going to be very helpful for this young man. And they're just kind of unrelated, but related to today, I just want to. Mardi Gras is French for Fat Tuesday, or sometimes called Carnaval depending on where you are in the world. And it originated as what is, what is now Italy dating back thousands of years to pagan spring and fertility rites. The holiday takes place before Lent and is about celebrating before a season of fasting and penance, so that's why everybody just pigs out. And the king cake, which we will have this evening, and if those of you that want to stay would like to have some, that goes back to the Middle Ages and to the 15th century, and a fava bean used to be included in that. And that was kind of a represents, representative of the baby Jesus. But now they put a little baby doll in it, but I'm not, and, and so if you cut into the cake and you get the baby, that will give you luck and prosperity. On the other side of it though, is if you get the baby in the cake, then you're responsible to bring one next year. But some, I'm not even sure a baby's in there because people have choked on them and they didn't want the liability of having it baked in the cake. Just wanted to share that a little bit.
And you just have to make sure not to bake it into the cake, right, it's after you bake it that the baby gets added in.
Yeah, but I didn't see a baby in this cake.
Oh, boy. Anyone get some plastic in there? I just have a few things to report, I attended a meeting with Senator Feinstein's office regarding the EPA NOAA DDT update for the Channel region that's been going on. There will be a community-facing website available soon that will have a lot of the data and historic maps and documents available for the public to view. We've asked that we are able to perhaps view that site before it launches or at least get notified when it launches so that we can make sure that anything on there is referencing local stakeholders properly. And also asked if it was possible to have a space for local stakeholders to potentially be available to answer questions. So if people have questions of if it's safe to do certain things, can they call certain local spaces to be able to have those questions answered? So they're supposed to get back to us this week with that update. Also had a conversation with Juliette Smith from Annenberg Media, she was asking about the impacts of the census and the changes in districts for us, and so we just kind of discussed what, what we saw as the upcoming changes for that. And then finally, not finally, but this coming Friday, hoping to see all of you either at the post office or Vons, we'll be at the post office between 11:30 to 2 and Vons from 3 to 6. Myself and Dr. Revlin Williams from the LA Orange County Broadband Regional Consortium will be here to do surveys, a simple Google survey that will allow you to provide your experiences with broadband internet services and connectivity on the island. The goal of this survey is to be able to gather resident sentiment regarding connectivity, where the difficulties are, where the positives are, and provide that as part of the outreach that we're continuing to do to try to get funds for undersea fiber and improvements to the broadband system out here. And then finally, just to thank you in conjunction with some of, some of what you've said tonight as well to the Island Company for lighting up the casino, it looked gorgeous last night. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to see it yet, but, or if everybody's had a chance to see it, but it's, it's the craziest set of times we're living in right now. And so I'm, I'm thankful for where we live and how we're able to live currently and hopeful for a resolution soon as well.
I just have a couple quick things, first on my list was Annie and now Lisa both have alluded to it, that the, I, you know, we all send our thoughts and prayers out to the persons of Ukraine. And if you haven't seen the casino building, have a look, it's beautiful. The Island Company changed the lights to blue and yellow to show support and solidarity with the people of Ukraine and they're also going to be sending out some press and media to let, you know, let it be known that Catalina is in support, so. That's wonderful. And then the other item is we are in active communications with Southern California Edison and they will be joining us on March 15th to give an update on water allocation. So those that have been waiting for that opportunity, they'll, they'll be here in, in the next council meeting. And that's all I have.
Yessenya?
Yes, one thing for me, LBCC is holding a K through 12 ethnic study summit this month. And that's something that I'm either going to attend in person or Zoom. And I did have a question for Lisa, that survey, is, is there any way to put that on the, on the city website? Or is that just something you have to walk up and do?
I'm not sure if we'll put it on the city website, I definitely will be sharing it personally, I'll check with city staff to see if we can do that. But yes, it'll be available, we can share it via text or call. And then also forgot about our call next week with Long Beach City College and Herlinda for the local outreach they were wanting to do, so I don't know if you can touch on that too.
Yes, I actually did have it on my notes, so we are in hopes of engaging with our Avalon students who will be or would like to attend LBCC. LBCC Board is just looking for guidance and suggestions that would just make their transition over to their campus and the mainland a lot easier.
I think the main part is for the, for the local school to hype it up because, you know, like we talked before, they're just, they're gearing to STEM and they're not gearing to certificate programs and that is creating a huge labor shortage in Avalon and also those are some excellent jobs out there that people could be having and be able to have a lifestyle in Avalon as well. You know, when you're getting 50 to 60 to $100 an hour being a plumber or electrician, you can afford to live here. So I'm glad you all are moving forward on that as well and hopefully Maroon is on the same page.
I think in addition.
I did actually see, I'm so sorry, Lisa.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was actually looking at LBCC's website and they also offer short-term training programs. I know Annie, that's something that you're interested in, and I was actually going to bring that up during our meeting to see if there's any way that it can relate to the jobs here on the island.
Oh, it, all those certificate programs, they definitely can, yes.
We had also had a previous call with. We had also, um, had a previous call with LBCC regarding their ability to potentially go after grant money to provide Avalon residents specifically with additional assistance to get to and from school, because that tends to be the problem for a lot of students. They can't afford to be living here and going to school there. So the ideas of remote school, which is of course so much simpler now than it used to be. And then also, um, the potential they were talking about for shuttle services that would pick them up on certain boat times, potential to cover boat costs, those types of programs that would be directly beneficial. Um, and then also providing training here for everyone, not just students who are traditional students, but students of all ages. So.
Yeah, good. Excellent, excellent. Okay. Okay, is that it? Okay. We, oral communications, this is an opportunity for people in the audience to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken. Is there anybody on your computer?
I have nothing, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, consent calendar. City manager, take it.
Thank you. Um, first of all, we have the minutes. We're seeking approval of minutes from February 10th, uh, special council meeting, the February 15th regular council meeting, the February 22nd special city council meeting. Item two is warrants, seeking approval for disbursements for the February 7th, 2022 through February 18th, 2022, totaling $806,789.30. And also an amendment to the February 15th, 2022 warrants as set forth in the staff report. Uh, item three, uh, need a renewed finding to continue to hold remote telecon, teleconference virtual city council meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. And as much as we currently are in, still in the position where a meeting in person would present imminent risk to health and safety of attendees, so we ask council to continue that. Item four, renewal of the general service agreement with Los Angeles County. Uh, we are seeking authorization for a general service agreement with LA County for five years. Uh, this is a renewal of our one that's expiring. This one will begin July 1st, 2022. And then item, item five, Senate Bill 619 resolution providing notification of intent to comply with Senate Bill 1383 to CalRecycle. And we are, uh, requesting council to adopt a resolution to approve the application, providing notification of intent to comply with Senate Bill 1383 and authorize staff to submit to CalRecycle. Uh, we need that, uh, to go out today or hopefully after council. And then appoint, uh, SCAG Regional Conference and General Assembly delegates. We have a resolution to appoint Mayor Annie Marshall as a city Avalon voting delegate and appoint another member of city council as alternate delegate. I would like to point out, I'm sorry, I should correct. Item five in the staff report, just one error on the top of the page of the staff report. It references January 18th, 2022. That should obviously reflect March 1st, 2022. Thank you.
Um, on, on item number six, uh, it says in this, uh, here on the, what we just talked about was appointing Mayor Annie Marshall as a delegate and council member Michael Ponce as the alternate.
Yes.
Is that what our action is for this?
Yes.
It's just that it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, no, I, just because your name wasn't actually said, I just wanted to make sure that that, that is still what, okay.
Yes, I apologize for that. It should have been changed, um, reflecting what the staff report said.
Okay. I didn't know if we needed to talk about an alternate or not. That was my, really my question. Okay, great.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items one through six.
I'll second.
Michael, okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number seven.
Thank you. Item number seven is first reading of zoning ordinance amendment ZO A 22-01, which amends the Avalon Municipal Code to regulate SB 9 urban lot split in two-unit projects and finds ordinance to be exempt from SEQA. We do, I believe we have Ryan Stager available to, uh, address this issue.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Ryan Stager. He's from our Orange County office of BBK. He'll be going over with a PowerPoint the requirements of SB 9. This is a state mandated ordinance that you are required to adopt. We have adjusted it to Avalon, as Ryan will, um, uh, indicate during the, uh, the presentation. One thing, uh, to note specific to Avalon is as you'll see, there are requirements of putting an off-street parking space for each one of these units. So these may be rare, and also these units cannot be used for, uh, transient occupancy rentals by, uh, requirement of state law. So, um, these are for, uh, expanding residential opportunities and residential housing for Avalon citizens. So with that, I'll, um, introduce, uh, Ryan. Go ahead and present the PowerPoint. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. Good evening, uh, members of the council. Uh, could we pull up the PowerPoint, please? I think I sent that to Devin earlier.
One second, it will be up.
I apologize. This is Matt. Actually, Ryan, I had made you the host because I hadn't pulled it up. If you could make the podium the host, and then I will have the presentation pulled up. I apologize.
Okay.
So I, I have the presentation, but, uh, if you could make the podium the host, I will switch it over.
Uh, I just did. I believe you're the host now.
All right.
Okay, uh, could you actually go to the previous slide, please? Perfect. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, so I'll be providing the staff report for the SB 9 implementation ordinance. Uh, as Scott noted, this is a new law that was, uh, signed in to, um, effect in September of this past, of 2021. And it requires the city, uh, to approve lot splits and two-unit projects ministerially. Uh, so what this means is, uh, there isn't any discretion or hearing, uh, for decision-making bodies, such as the Planning Commission. Um, SB 9 is unique, uh, for a number of reasons, including that it, uh, allows property owners to do both, uh, two-unit project, uh, and a lot split. So if, if a property owner decided to do both, um, they could potentially convert, you know, what was previously a single-family lot, uh, that had one single-family residence on it, they could split, they could tear down the residence, split the lot, and build two units on either lot. So for a folder, total of four units over, um, uh, over, uh, on two lots. Uh, for Avalon, this will apply in the LD zone, which is the low-density residential and low-intensity recreational zone. If we could go to the next slide, we have a map here that shows, uh, where specifically the LD zones are in Avalon. So anywhere that's yellow is an LD zone, um, and that's, uh, a spot where a property owner would be eligible to apply for a lot split or two-unit project. And everywhere that's not yellow are areas where SB 9 projects would not be allowed.
And this also includes Hamilton Cove. Hamilton Cove is yellow.
Yes.
And the mall?
Uh, next slide, please. So lot splits and two-unit projects, in order to be eligible for ministerial approval, have to comply with, um, a very comprehensive list of, of detailed requirements. Um, and so these next slides are really to give you a, an overview of some of the, the most critical parts of each of these requirements. Um, a lot of them are similar between lot splits and two-unit projects, and our ordinance implements each of these. So, um, you'll see these topics coming up a couple of times here. Uh, so for a lot split, uh, each lot after the split has to be at least 1,200 square feet. Uh, and the most that the lot can deviate from a 350 split is up to 6040. Uh, the lot split also cannot involve the demolition or alteration of, um, what the ordinance refers to as protected housing. So this includes the, uh, housing listed here on the slide. And really, you know, this is intended, big picture, SB 9 is intended to increase the amount of affordable housing, uh, in the state. So it, it includes various protections that prohibit a property owner from demolishing or altering, uh, typically tenant, tenant or previously occupied by tenant, uh, housing. So if someone comes in and says, hey, I'm gonna want to do this lot split, and I'm gonna be taking down this house, uh, but I had a tenant in there a year and a half ago, uh, that would be an instance where, uh, SB 9 would, would prohibit the city from approving that project, and they would not be eligible for a lot split. So it's, it's an important, uh, distinction to, to be aware of when these applications, if and when they come in. Uh, next slide, please. So SB 9 provides that, uh, the lot split must occur in a single-family residential zone, which in Avalon is the, the LD zone. Uh, the lot cannot be historic landmark or within a designated historic district. Uh, the lot also cannot be, could not have been created from a prior lot split. Uh, so, so the owner gets one bite at the apple. Uh, the lot that they're going into split could not have been subject to a prior urban lot split. The owner also cannot, um, own adjacent lots and subdivide those lots or work in concert with their neighbors to, to do successive lot splits, uh, down the street. Uh, and then SB 9 also requires the, uh, lot split to comply with the objective standards in the Subdivision Map Act. Uh, next slide, please. So both lot splits and two-unit projects, uh, are prohibited from taking place in certain prohibited areas. And this is laid out in, um, a fairly extensive provision of the government code. And, and the way this works is there's a laundry list of areas that i-if the lot falls in one of those areas, then that's an instance where an SB 9 project, um, cannot occur and is prohibited. So the, the spots I put here on the slide are kind of, are there to give the council a flavor for the types of areas that are prohibited. So prime farmland, wetlands, um, a FEMA-designated flood hazard area, endangered species habitat, um, a hazardous waste site. Um, a lot of these are very, very fact-specific and, um, typically designated by state or federal authorities. But, um, you know, as, as applications, if, if and when they come in, uh, that'll be something where, you know, staff will have to understand whether any of these areas are potentially implicated. And then if they are, then that is, that can't be a basis to deny a project. Uh, next slide, please. So SB 9 allows the city to impose, um, objective zoning standards, subdivision standards, and, uh, design standards. And, uh, that's exactly what this ordinance, uh, this evening is doing. It's implementing SB 9, uh, in the city against the, or rather, to comply with the restrictions that we're discussing, but also then to, um, kind of lay the rules of the road, if you will, for if a project occurs in the city, uh, the standards it needs to comply with. Um, on the slide here is the definition for an objective standard. Uh, really the key here is the underlying portion. So it's something that doesn't involve any personal or subjective judgment. So an example, example of something that would be objective would be, you know, like a, like a height limit, a setback requirement, you know, X number of plants per X feet. I mean, something that's very, very specific, uh, where, where reasonable minds, uh, would not differ. Um, as opposed to something like should be creatively or laid out in an envi, you know, an inviting manner, or some sort of, you know, subjective judgment where someone could, you know, two folks could disagree or have different thoughts on it. That's the type of standard we cannot impose. So everything in the ordinance is objective and it really intended to be pretty black and white. Uh, next slide, please. So the objective standards that, that cities can impose have to comply with a number of guardrails that, that SB 9 contains. Um, a few of the most important ones are, are listed here on the slide. Um, the city's objective standards are, you know, must give way if they physically preclude the construction of two units that are at least 800 square feet. So if, for example, um, some sort of, I don't know, hypothetically, like a landscaping standard, or something got in, you know, got in the way and someone was like, hey, my site plan is here, and, uh, you know, this landscaping requirement is standing in the way of me getting my two units that are at least 800 square feet, you know, then that's an instance where the standard would have to give way to allow the units to be constructed. Setbacks are also important here. Uh, the city can impose its standard setbacks in the ordinance before you, this evening imposes the standard setbacks that apply in the LD zone. However, um, related to the top requirement, if, um, the setbacks, if the LD zone setback standards are prohibiting someone from, uh, building two 800-square-foot units, then the city has to allow, uh, those standards to be reduced down to as little as four feet on the side and rear, um, to make way for the units. Um, as Scott noted, uh, SB 9 also limits the parking requirements. So the most that a city can, uh, require is one off-street parking space per unit. Um, and the city, cities are prohibited from acquiring off-street parking, um, in instances where the property is very close to certain, uh, designated, uh, public transportation infrastructure. Um, and an example of, of a high-quality transit corridor would be, you know, fixed bus route with, uh, bus service every 15 minutes or so during peak travel, during commuting hours, um, a rail station, you know, something, something fairly, um, established with very regular service that, you know, is, is an instance where the legislature has said, if you live that close to, say, a train station, um, you don't need to, you can't require them to have an off-street parking space. It's my understanding that, that likely none of these would apply in the city, but uh, this is, uh, provided in SB 9, so the, the ordinance includes these provisions, uh, to comply with, with this requirement. Uh, next slide, please. So a few other restrictions. Uh, all SB 9 units, two-unit projects and lot splits, uh, must be used only for residential purposes. So you can't have any non-residential uses on the lots. Uh, the city can't require, uh, right-of-way dedications or, uh, off-site improvements as a condition of approval for a lot split. Um, in, in instances of a lot split, uh, cities can't require non, the correction of non-conforming zoning conditions, um, as a condition of approval. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, go ahead and, there might be a slight, yeah, one more hit? Perfect, okay. Oh, yeah, there we go. Um, so a couple other restrictions here. Uh, there's reporting requirements to HCD. So, um, the number of lot split applications and two-unit project applications, uh, that, that the city gets, uh, need to be reported in the annual housing element report. Um, and owner occupancy is, is an interesting one under SB 9. Um, for two-unit projects, uh, the city can require the owner to reside in one of the units. But if someone just does a lot split without a two-unit project, uh, then the city can only require an affidavit from the owner that he or she intends to occupy one of the units as their principal residence for at least three years. So it's, it's an interesting, um, distinction that, that the legislature made in SB 9, but, uh, the ordinance reflects this distinction and, uh, it's something that's, it's part of this landscape. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, a lot of these, well, here, I'll start here with two-unit projects, fairly similar requirements and eligibility requirements, uh, as urban lot splits. So I'll go through, through these a bit quicker. Um, but like urban lot splits, uh, the city must ministerially approve a two-unit project, um, without discretion, without a hearing. And a two-unit project can show up in a couple of different ways. It can be two new units on a lot, um, or it could be someone adding a second unit to a lot that already has one unit. Um, as I noted, a lot of these are very similar requirements for eligibility. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, yeah, also must be in the LD zone. Uh, the two-unit project can't alter, demolish protected housing, such as property that was occupied by a tenant within the last three years. Uh, lot can't implicate historical protections or be in a statutorily prohibited area, uh, such as a hazardous waste site or protected habitat. Uh, one thing that is unique to two-unit projects is there's a demolition cap. So, um, someone comes in for a two-unit project, uh, they are prohibited by SB 9 from doing one if their project involves demolishing more than 25% of the walls of an existing dwelling, um, if a tenant has been there within the la, if a tenant has occupied that residence in the last three years. So if it's someone who's never rented out their house and they're wanting to do a two-unit project, that, they're not really implicated by this. It's, it's more if someone's previously used the property as rental housing, uh, this demolition cap is, is another, uh, platform that the legislature built into SB 9 to, um, hinder folks from demolishing housing that had recently been occupied by tenants. Uh, next slide, please. So similar, similar standards apply for SB 9, uh, two-unit projects as they do for lot splits. So we're, we're limited to imposing objective standards. Uh, the standards have to give way if they physically preclude, uh, two units that are at least 800 square feet. Um, and the same parking and setback rules- And the same parking and setback rules apply to two-unit projects as they do to urban lot splits. Next slide, please. So few things here that are worth pointing out for both lot splits and two-unit projects. So in instances where a project is otherwise totally eligible under, you know, all the boxes that need to be checked for a lot split or a two-unit project, the city still has an opportunity and an avenue to deny that project if the building official can make a written finding that the project would have a specific adverse impact on public health and safety that, that cannot be mitigated or avoided. So i- in that instance, you know, if there's a legitimate public health, safety, or environmental concern that is in the mix for, you know, it's a, it's an ad hoc project-by-project determination. But if that's, if that's in play, you know, there, there is an avenue for the city to be able to deny projects that, that have significant potential impacts. So something I wanted to point out. Next slide, please. Couple other things here. ADUs have recently been, been a topic of fairly frequent legislation over the last handful of years. And so SB nine actually does talk to the SB, or rather, the ADU rules in the state government code. So there's a couple of exceptions that have been created by SB nine to the general rule that, that cities have to allow ADUs and JADUs. So if someone does an SB nine lot split and then they also do a two-unit project, they don't, they're, they're done. They don't get to also then add on an ADU or a JADU. Also, if someone does only a lot split, the city doesn't have to allow an ADU or a JADU if there's already two units on the lot. And that includes a JADU and ADU. So if someone does a lot split and say one of the, the new, one new lot is empty, vacant, and the other lot has, you know, the previously existing single-family residence and say a detached ADU, that lot that has those two can't do anything more. The city wouldn't have to allow an ADU or a JADU on that lot. So they, they only really come into play when, when a lot split is in the mix, but they're, they're important exceptions to the state's ADU rules. Next slide, please. As Scott noted in the beginning of, of this item, short-term rentals are not allowed. So the city is required to prohibit short-term rentals in any SB nine unit. The ordinance does that and has a platform where the applicant is actually required to record a deed restriction that gives the city an avenue to enforce the prohibition on short-term rentals. SEQA also does not apply. So if an application satisfies the requirements for ministerial approval, then SEQA doesn't apply to that specific application. Next slide, please. So we're, we're at the, the tail end here of the presentation. The, the ordinance adds two provisions to the Avalon municipal code. We have one for lot splits and another for two-unit projects. And the ordinance, as Scott noted, is structured to retain as much local control as state law allows the city to exercise. If we can go to the next slide, please. So these are largely lifted from the staff reports. So, you know, a lot of them will be very, very familiar as, as we've discussed them, but you know, the lot, the city's ordinance provides that lot needs, lots need to be in the LD zone to be eligible for an SB nine lot split. The lot sizes for the lot splits track state law. Same with the unit size. The setbacks, the LD zone setbacks are imposed, but they have the allowances for, that SB nine requires for, to accommodate two 800-square-foot units. The use restrictions match SB nine's requirements, only residential uses, can't use them as short-term rentals. There's also a deed restriction, as I noted earlier, that provides the city with the express authority to enforce the use restriction. So the, the ban on short-term rentals and the non-residential use. So if someone's putting their, one of their SB nine units on Airbnb, there isn't, there is an avenue on title for the city to enforce under. Next slide, please. Yeah, owner occupancy is also included, that, and it tracks the allowances under SB nine. There's also architecture and landscaping standards, which are all objective. And there's also a addition of fire hazard mitigation measures, which, those apply in very high fire hazard severity zones. And it's my understanding that Susanna worked with the fire chief to review and sign off on those. So that is my overview of the SB nine ordinance and the legislation. And I'm, I'm here to answer any questions if, if the council has any. Thank you.
Every single one of my questions was answered in that presentation. Thank you so much.
Wow.
Well, I know, but it's, it's pretty funny. I mean, the state did not come and look at Avalon. When you look at that map, the only place I could see anybody being able to build is at Hamilton Cove. That other piece of yellow looked like it was at the mole.
And the other one, echo along Upper Whitley. The homes all up along Upper Whitley and, and around there. It's not very much.
And the flood zone is right here.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's kind of crazy. I do have a question. So, okay, so I do this on my 1,050 square foot. I can't even do it on 1,050 square foot unless I go up. But, so let's, let's say I'm renting a place and the guy wants to do the lot thing. And, and I'm saying, why can't I say, if, if I'm the owner, I'll say, we're gonna, we're gonna make these two units and you can stay in one. Why couldn't they do that? And then, you know, why do you have to, you don't have to boot that person out necessarily if they're willing to live in a smaller unit, I wouldn't think.
Right.
I mean, so I don't know if they can work around that. The other thing is, so I do this thing and I, now I have two units and I've got it on the deed. If I sell it, it goes with the property for perpetuity?
Like if you, if you sell the property, like both units go with it?
Yeah, so I've, I've done it and now I want to sell them. But that deed restriction goes for perpetuity to the next buyer?
Yeah, if it's recorded against title, then it, then it's, it's enforceable, you know, it, it, it runs with, it runs with title. So it would be, it would be on there until the, the city took it off.
Okay. So at some point, the realtors would know that, right? So that they, when they go to sell this place, they have to tell the people that whatever the deed restriction.
Yeah, that would be on the title report.
And that's an important reason why the deed restriction is required. I mean, obviously to give the city the, the ability to enforce, but also just so, so future buyers are on notice that this is the history of the lot and some of the restrictions that it's subject to.
And you can never have a CUP on it. Okay. I really, and then with the, with the water situation, I don't think people are going to be running to do, it's just, it's, I just find it a little bit comical that it really doesn't fit in with Avalon. And then what, you know, we limit it to one parking spot per unit, okay. We would want to give them no parking spots if they were right in the middle of town, perhaps. I mean, how do you, you do a lot, you know, it's just kind of silly.
But again, I, we, we, we understand this, this is required. And so this is one of those things where, you know, state law sometimes doesn't comport with the unique city that Avalon is.
Right.
And I just want to throw my little two cents in there. The reason we're here is because cities over there continually can refuse to fix their planning, development, to really accommodate smaller lots, smaller homes. So the state took it upon itself to do what it did. And yes, I believe in local control, but at some point, the "not in my backyard" has to go away so that people can build affordable housing on these lots.
Right.
And, and it just, cities brought this on themselves by not allowing these things to happen naturally. So that's just my two cents.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, it doesn't take into account anything about Avalon, which is weird, but.
Further discussion? If not, um...
So, yeah, so Mayor, when you open the, the, the public comment, this is actually a public hearing. So if you could just say the magic words, I'm opening a public hearing on this?
Okay, I'm opening a public hearing on this. Any comments from the audience or on your...
I have none, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So recommended actions are find the ordinance exempt and introduce and waive. Would anybody like to do that?
You need to close the public.
Oh, we'll close, okay. Close it. Sorry. Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, oh my goodness, okay, this is a long one, isn't it? Okay. Um, I will make a motion to find the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15358 of the SEQA guidelines because it will not result in a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment. And two, do we, Scott, we do need to read all of these, right? Because it's a public hearing? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, you have to read the title of the ordinance and the motion is to waive all readings of it.
Okay. Number two, Section 15061B3 of the SEQA guidelines, as there is no possibility that this activity will have a significant adverse effect on the environment. And three, Government Code Section 65852.21J and 66411.7N, which provide the adoption of an ordinance implementing the provisions of Government Code Section 66411.7 and 65852.21, i.e., SB nine, is statutorily exempt from SEQA. To introduce and waive all further readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending the Avalon Municipal Code adds Section 92.10 and Article 7 to Chapter 9, V regarding SB nine urban lot splits and two-unit projects.
Well said. I'll second.
Move in second. If there's no further comments, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. So you got all this, Susanna, right? Good.
Great. Thank you so much. And thank you, Ryan, for presenting to the council.
Yeah, thank you. Right. Good evening, everyone. Good night.
Thank you so much.
Item number eight. Before we move on, I just want to recognize Susanna Gutierrez is here. She did a lot of legwork on this and wrote the staff report that you had before you, so.
Nice job, Susanna.
Item number eight. First reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 9-1.01 of Title IX, Planning and Zoning of Avalon Municipal Code relating to Planning Commission membership. Recommended action, we are asking council to waive all readings of this ordinance and amend Chapter 9.1-01, Title IX, which would essentially require Planning Commission members to be residents of the City of Avalon and remove the language in the current membership which allows business owners or management positions that don't necessarily are resident, have residency to be on Planning Commission.
And the residency would be reviewed as per boat tickets?
No.
It's nine months, it's, it's nine months residency on, on the island.
Okay, well, again, so I travel back and forth a lot and I have a second home and blah, blah, blah. How do, is, and I'm gone three months of the year, four months of the year to my home, off and on.
I, I think if you hold a subsidy card, you've proved that you're a resident.
That's my question.
I think the subsidy card would be appropriate, but I absolutely disagree with using transportation data from Catalina Express solely as anything because there's other methods of travel, including personal vessels.
Oh, right, right.
So I, I just, I think if we show proof of a subsidy card or if you hold a subsidy card, that should suffice because the legwork's already been done to prove employment or residency.
Well, and the only thing I would like to, because it's also on there about an alternate. And we put that alternate on there a long, long time ago. And, you know, we don't put in alternates for us. So I don't know if we want to remove the alternate to have an alternate.
The base, the basis of the alternate is that if you have, unlike where we do, where there's a conflict and numerous people can't be there for it.
Because they have a conflict of interest.
Where we would have to pull straws if we, if we all have a conflict. This would be, at least the alternate was there to help mitigate that.
Because we haven't done this for a long, long time. I think Janie Hall was the first alternate. She ended up on the Planning Commission.
I was actually the first alternate.
Oh, okay. We haven't done anything since then. So if we're, if we're going to keep it on there, we ought to do it. It's hard enough to get people to be on the Planning Commission, but, I don't know. If we want to keep it there, we, then we should move forward and recruit for an alternate. But then the thing is, if it's an alternate that's not going to be at every meeting, then to be on top of what's going on, you know, I don't know.
But I'm just saying, that's what the basis of having an alternate was for.
I'm, I would be more in favor of just eliminating the alternate position. If you're going to have an eighth person, you have an eighth person, but I think seven is sufficient. We're a five-member council. We do just fine even if we have a conflict. So my personal opinion is to eliminate the alternate position. But I vaguely remember we had to bring that back to change the ordinance to have an alternate.
Yes, yes. So if you wanted to eliminate the alternate, that would be another ordinance change. You could hold this matter over and we could come back if that's your direction with one ordinance to make both changes, residency and alternate, or you could do this and we'd bring back a second ordinance to eliminate the alternate.
I don't see the rush in that Planning Commission doesn't meet until, you know, before our...
And I believe when it was brought up in the past, that Scott Campbell just advised us that it's like a placeholder on there and there's no harm in keeping it in the ordinance.
Okay, but we don't actually have to.
You don't, you don't have to.
We don't have to.
Yeah, yes, exactly. You don't, you don't have to fill the, the alternate. Usually what happens is, just, just for the record, is we find out when the agenda goes out a week before whether there's potential conflict, and then we notify the alternate that, hey, thi- this is going to happen because someone lives within a certain, you know, square, you know, area, or someone has, is employed by so-and-so and they've got a application. So it's very, very rarely is it the last-minute thing where the alternate's being asked to suddenly prepare for it.
Okay, but if we don't have somebody in the wings, or you get an alternate that also will be conflicted because it's been 300 feet of what's going on, um...
I think part of it too was just trying, I thought originally the conversation went around trying to get people more interested in it. And maybe if they didn't have that commitment of having to be the person making the decision every time, they might be willing to try it out and see, which I don't know. I mean, we can seed an alternate and see if anyone would apply for it or use the current pool that had already applied to, to add on. But, yeah, I don't...
So we won't change it now and we'll decide if we're going to go out and say, anybody want to be an alternate?
Change it then, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Any, any public comment?
I have none.
Okay. Does somebody like to introduce?
Then I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Chapter 9-1.01 of Title IX, Planning and Zoning of the Avalon Municipal Code relating to Planning Commission membership.
I'll second.
Okay. Move in second if no comments.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Item nine. It's the Fourth of July fireworks vendor. This is authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Garden State Fireworks, Incorporated, to provide the fireworks show on the Fourth of July. Mr. Hart went out, received two proposals and made the selection, as it stated in the staff report, that this is the, although it's not the cheapest, it's the best.
Welcome. So the city staff solicited quotes from various fireworks, but only received two of them, one from Pyrotechnics, which we've worked with before in the past, as well as Garden State Fireworks, Inc. As we looked at, and as you can see in the staff report, when you look at the two side by side, you get a whole lot more at a Garden State, literally 7,000 more items that get shot into the air during that, that time. Even though it is $3,000 more, it seems to be the better show that we deserve to have this year, being the first show we'll have in over three years. So staff has, staff has requested that we move ahead with Garden, Garden State. And, and for us, Love Catalina has also, they, they're the ones who do pay for the show and they've agreed to go with, with whatever council has decided to move forward with. Is there any questions?
No, but, but I think it needs to be said because, and I was talking to the city manager about it. Um... about it, the people that Gary Johnson was going to pay, I know that Mr. Maestros looked into that and they are not licensed and all of that.
They could, yes.
So, we couldn't use them if we wanted.
Yes. Expo Shows, he, the owner of Expo Shows is not licensed to do it. That's why even when he was supposed to shoot our shoe, show last year, he actually contracted that out to somebody else because he was not actually licensed to do it. And, and so, we have been, we have been told by the state that we are to stay away from Expo Shows.
Right, excellent, okay.
I think this is great. And I, I guess it's not an RFP, so you don't automatically have to take the lowest bid. And I, that was a question that I got today. But it makes perfect sense to go with a show that's going to be significantly better for very little money on top of that. Fully supportive.
They're really excited. They, they shot the inaugural for Joe, for Joe Biden. They shot that show. They're really excited about shooting ours. They see this as a, as a great opportunity to get their name a little bit louder out here on the West Coast, so...
Yeah, great.
That's great. I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Garden State Fireworks, Inc. to provide the fireworks show on the Fourth of July for the amount of $38,000.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
Oh, and I'm sorry, did we have any public comment?
We have no comments.
My bad, I jumped in on that.
That's okay. All right, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. You're up again, Dave.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The last item we have is awarded contract for the Joe Machado Field concession stand. Again, Mr. Hart went out and solicited bids for this and we're seeking authorization for the city manager and negotiate and execute an agreement with Francisco Rojo for the operations of snack bar concessions at Joe Machado Field and that the city council waive any irregularities in the proposal.
So, on January 4th...
Sorry to interrupt you, Dave, I'm so sorry. I just, I will be, I recuse myself due to the appearance of a conflict with one of the applicants.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, on January 4th, the city council authorized staff to continue the RFP process. That was originally approved on December 7th. So, we, we extended the date to January 28th. January 28th came and we had no proposals at that time. I was asked by some of the people who were interested in putting the proposal in, could we extend the date? Brought it to city managers. They said, "Well, extend the date to February 17th." We then got two proposals, one from a company called Don Tony's Fruit and the other one from Francisco Rojo. And based on the criteria that we chose of the food menu, the experience of the crew, the marketing vision and staffing, we were able to, by comparison, we believe that Francisco Rojo would better, be a better advantage for the city to, to go with Francisco, Francisco Rojo's proposal over Don Tony's.
I like that you, for the first six months, reduce the rate to $2 a square foot.
Yes, that was actually advice from ex-city manager or...
Co-city manager.
First time I heard that.
Denise Ratty, because she, she realizes it's been hard for a lot of the people who have been taking over to get their feet up and running. So, she thought it would be a great way to help, help them and motivate them more to get their business up and going.
Why is not either of the applicants here, or at least Mr. Rojo?
I did let both know that we, today's city council, we will be speaking on this.
Well, I have questions and if he's home, Frank, if you're at home listening, I'm curious, how much time will it take to get you up and running to get your seller's permit and all the permits you need? And once this thing is signed, I mean, do we sign it not until he gets his sellers? How are we going to work the timing of that? Because I think some of these things are going to take a little bit of time to get.
It's going to take, it's going to take a little bit of time. He's been working already.
Some months, probably.
Both of them, Juan Gomez, he, he already had, he's our, he's already a street vendor and a licensed street vendor, but he hasn't been able to get it up because he hasn't, he doesn't have a commissary right now. So, he was hoping this would help to be his commissary.
Right.
So, his business is already licensed and ready to go. He, Frankie has already, or Francisco has already been in talks with LA County Public Health. They're very aware of the, the situation happening here with verges. And so, he's just waiting for the go. Once he gets the go, he's, he's already, he's already going to start the permit process.
Right.
I'm not sure how long that's going to be. It is LA County Public Health.
I mean, his, his proposal was very well done.
Yeah.
I'm really pleased with that. My other question is, are you planning, Frank, are you planning on getting a beer and wine license at some point?
He, he is, at some point. But he wants to start off just, just with the business.
Okay. The other thing, you said he was going to be handing out flyers. Well, we don't allow people to hand out flowers, just flyers. I just wanted to make that mention.
Yeah, I had let them both know that as well.
Okay. And hopefully he will be able to work and want to work with the street vendor, because that's what we had put, I believe, in the RFP, that maybe there could be some cooperation or something like that?
Yes, but I think we discovered also that if you, you had to be the vendor in order to use the commissary.
Ah.
Is that correct?
Because one of the things is a, as a, as a vendor, where you, where you were, commissary is, you must store your food there as well. And, and within the storage of the food, it cannot be in the same storage area as somebody else's storage area. So, they would have to have their own refrigerator onsite, which is something that, when I looked at, this could be a conversation for later, the little side, the little, the little room that we have for, for the vending cart that was already done, and that's completely up to health code, you can actually have a refrigerator system in there. So, that might be something we can look at about putting a refrigerator system in there, which would allow him to use, to work with another vendor in, in that space. I've, I've been looking into that.
Okay, great, okay. If there's no comments, are there, any comments?
There is none, ma'am.
I authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with Francisco Rojo for the operation of the snack bar concession at Joe Machado Field and that the city council waive any irregular, irregularities to the proposal.
I would second, and just with the caveat to make sure that we had discussed providing the previous operator's contact information to the new operator in the event that they wanted to discuss the possibility of using permits or selling permits to be able to open sooner. That was part of the discussion. So, just making sure that we're passing on the contact info if they don't already have it, which I think they may.
It probably does, but, yeah. You understand what Lisa's saying, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I will, I'll make sure that they get in contact with each other.
That they can contact each other and choose to discuss that if they choose to or not, so...
Right, right, correct, okay. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no comments?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
She's abstained.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
And Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
So, four ayes and one abstained.
I'm glad they corrected you too. Not just me. Okay. Well, if there's no further action, I would like everybody to stick around. We have refreshment and tin cake. So, meeting is adjourned.
Good night, Tony.